All right. I'd like to again welcome everyone here tonight. We are, I think, we've got one council member, Councilman Fuggerous is going to join us via Zoom. And so that gives us the number we need tonight. So appreciate that, Mark. We're just a, I'll call the meeting to order in just a minute, but before we do, I'll invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then I'll bring the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us today. Thank you for this community in which we serve. Thank you for the residents who are here and the groups that are here to celebrate tonight. And God, we just ask that you give the council wisdom tonight on the decisions they must make. And Father, we thank you most of all for the privilege to serve our residents in this capacity. God just got us tonight and we ask you these things and trust you for them in Jesus' name. Amen. I'll call, now call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. And to start things off, I will ask our Anna McKinnney, our Deputy Chief of Staff, to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo. Jeff Watson. Mike Overton.
Here.
Aaron Huntley.
Here.
He should be on.
Might need to un-Mark mute or unmute Mark. That was a flub. Are you there, Mark? Or mute, whichever.
Do you want me to come back to him?
Guys, do we have him? He's not on. Okay, let us know when you have him and we'll, Anna will join, we'll record it on the minutes, okay?
Randall Harriman. Ernest Kate.
Here.
All right, thank you. And we'll, we'll move on to our next item that doesn't really take a vote, comments from our residents. If we have citizens that would like to comment on, to the council tonight, this is the part of each agenda that the council sets aside at each regular meeting to hear from our residents. If there's anyone concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, we would welcome you to come to the microphone, please clearly state your name and address, and keep your comments no more than five minutes, and understand that the council won't take action tonight on what you bring forward.
Is it okay if my daughter passes out with some pictures?
Sure, absolutely.
Our concern this evening is about--
Name, name and address, please.
Debbie Salz-Lahy, 806 North Pleasant, Springdale, Arkansas. My daughter, Maray Lahy, same address. I'm here to address ordinances being forced in our neighborhoods here in Springdale. Currently, there are two businesses operating at 808 North Pleasant and 810 North Pleasant. There are subcontractors, one is an insulation business, one is a concrete business, and one happens to be next door to me in this residence. I was told today that a gravel road that has been constructed on this property for the purpose of their business has been there consistently since 2007. I have lived there since 2009 and known the people who live there and own the property from 2002 to 2012. There's never been a gravel road there. There are currently other businesses in Springdale that concern me in residential areas that just should not be happening. A construction business at 229 Northwest End, Vic Enterprises. A construction business, Alfaro Business, registered with the Secretary of State at 704 Landale, a residential address. So I just wonder why this goes on in our neighborhoods and next door to our home. As you can see, there's no gravel road leading to this home. And the garage is on the north side of the building, the way it was built in 1960. The detached garage that was fenced in when I bought my home was used to store lawn mowers, equipment, never lumber. The back gravel lot that is currently now is a drop lot for construction equipment, which the city has received pictures of for years now. So I would like that the city address this problem in our neighborhoods. Would anyone else here?
Anything else?
Like to see.
All right. Thank you all. We may have some, we're not, we're not going to take action on anything tonight, but we do have, Ron, do you want to address this, or Ernest, or either, I know y'all have both looked into this?
I'll let Ernest start.
Okay, thank you.
There was a citation issued for the residents of 808 North Pleasant. The gentleman was given a court date for April 1st. I was aware of the neighbor's concerns, so we were able to get the gentleman in today this morning, and I've sent an email to everyone in the city council and as well to Ms. Salz as well, letting them know what the, what the disposition was of that case. I'm not aware of the, these other residences. I mean, it is entirely, and I don't know, we'd have to check on these, it is entirely possible someone could have a registered address with the Secretary of State and have a home office, and it'd be lawful. So we'd have to check on those.
I invite you all to drive by these addresses.
Well, we, we wrote them, I wrote them down, and we'll check on those. But as Ernest said, there could be a lot of explanations for that, but thank you for giving those to us.
Hey Ernest, what would the citation be for?
Which one?
The one that was cited.
He was cited for storing a commercial vehicle on the property. He had like a, it was like a small backhoe.
Like a mini Yaks.
I have a year worth of photographs sent to the city of all the equipment that has gone 24 feet from my home and stored and picked up on that property. And I would like to ask the city to ask the people at 808 North Pleasant to not constantly drive past my home. When they arrived today, they honked their horn twice intensely parked by our home. And if this is the way that, that people are treated in their homes in the city of Springdale, it's very sad to me. And I don't know how a gravel road that existed from 2007, from an aerial view, and those pictures are from when my neighbor lived there, and there's no gravel road to that detached building. I don't understand. I don't understand. But I'm sure I've used my five minutes, and I ask you all to please consider our residential neighborhoods. Right now, we have trash bins that have been in front of rental property since before Christmas, and until just yesterday, they were in the street. I don't, there is remodel, construction pile of trash at 811 North Pleasant from a remodel that has gone on for three years. There's no remodeling going on at 808. It is specifically there to conduct their construction business, along with 810's insulation business. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All ready to move on? We're at item, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay. Item five is the approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. Hopefully, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So move second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. All right. And I'm going to, I'm gonna, I've got a proclamation to read, and I'm going to go to the podium, and any or all of you that would like to join me for Rotary, you're welcome. Yes, this podium. Y'all get around up here. Yeah, this is a big deal. Y'all come on up here. Anna, you might get a picture while we're doing this. You're going to be on TV anyway.
Oh, good.
All right. I love to share the, share the love here. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. This is a, this is a joy. As a, as a Rotary member myself, this is a, I'm proud of the work that these people have done and many that have come before them over the past hundred years. So I'll go ahead and, this is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas the first Rotary Club was formed when Attorney Paul P. Harris, and this is kind of long, but I think it's really good. Paul P. Harris called together a meeting of three business acquaintances in downtown Chicago, Illinois, on February 23rd, 1905. Their mission was to provide service to others, promote integrity, advance world understanding, goodwill, and peace through the fellowship of business professional and community leaders. In 1911, they adopted two mottos, service above self, in addition to he profits most who serves best. And whereas 20 years after the original founding, Cal Callison, a Rogers Rotary Club member, met with the first 18 member of the club of the Rotary Club of Springdale, Arkansas, USA, and it was chartered on March 18th, 1925. And whereas since its inception, the Springdale Rotary Club has contributed time, energy, monetary funds, and physical labor in support of the citizens of the city of Springdale, Arkansas. Some, but not all of these endeavors include, and here's where it gets kind of long, support and contributions to the USO. Supported the local farming community by honoring farmers, helped fund the building of a regional hospital, support for the high school football team, sponsored the Four Square Boys Club ages 10 to 15 years old, sponsored a calf club for the high school students, sponsored a senior high banquet, assisted the Chamber of Commerce in funding a community swimming pool in 1930s, paid high school tuition for 15 students in 1933. High school tuition.
That's the good old days.
Yeah, that's the good old days, all right. In 1934, the club sponsored the first local Boy Scout troop. Rotary donated $1,575 to purchase uniforms for the Springdale High School Band in 1949. The club donated chairs and umbrellas to Murphy Park in 1956. I think we've got a picture outside my office of the, the opening of the pool at Murphy Park, and, and so I think you can go look at some of those chairs and umbrellas if you want to. They gave 100, that was the year I was born, matter of fact. Pay, okay, let me find my place now. Oh, here's a good one, and some of us will remember this, I bet. They gave $100 for the purchase of a trampoline for the athletic department in 1959. $500 was given for the press box at the high school athletic field. Over the years, the Springdale Rotary Club has supported community organizations such as the Red Cross, Heart Fund, Cancer Fund, and the Bookmobile. In 1985, Rotary launched the Polio Plus Program to tackle global polio eradication through the mass vaccination of children. Springdale participates locally in the World Polio Day each year. The Springdale Rotary has supported Rotary International and numerous international students. The Rotary Club provides ushers for the rodeo of the Ozarks. Since 2003, the Springdale Rotary Club and Rotary District 6110 have been involved in purchasing and delivering wheelchairs around the world. The Springdale Rotary Club completed a project to provide water to 13,000 people in India by providing a grant from the Rotary Foundation. In 2021, the Springdale Rotary Club installed free little, little free pantries located around the community to be stocked with non-perishable food items. The club supported our first responders and frontline workers through the COVID-19 pandemic by providing meals for the police and fire departments, the medical personnel at Northwest Health, the community clinic, the senior center, and Public Works. The Rotary Club has distributed groceries to the families of students at Lee and Jones Elementary Schools to help combat food insecurity over the Christmas holidays. Each year, the Springdale Rotary Club purchases three books for each third grader, third grade student in the Springdale Public School District to promote reading. The Springdale Rotary Club presents two scholarships to Springdale graduates of Springdale Public Schools each year, the Willard Walker Scholarship and the Springdale Rotary Club Workforce Readiness Scholarship. Rotary has contributed $5,000 to the nationally recognized Springdale Schools robotics team. They've installed book barrels for leaving a book and taking a book. Springdale joined forces with Rotary Club of Fayetteville to present a day of awareness to end human trafficking. Springdale Rotary Club funded the local Miracle League Field at the Tyson Sports Complex. The club sponsors the Greening of the Creek, St. Patrick's Day Festival, and Leprechaun Race, and the Pig Trail Mud Run. Rotary donated the Rotary Adventure Park, a place where people of all ages and abilities can come together and have a fun adventure. Rotary Family Park was completed in 1990. Sweat equity and financial donations provided this 17-acre park to complete the Tyson Park Complex. Most recently, the Gerald Harp Treehouse Park was built in and among the 175 trees planted by the Rotary Club 35 years ago. This, this park marks the 100th year of service to the Springdale community. And if any of our, anyone watching or anyone in the room has not been to the Gerald Harp Treehouse Park, it's, it's really a cool deal, and people, people that go there are loving it, I want you to know. Whereas the Springdale Rotary Club has committed to serve this community joyfully and selflessly for over 100 years and has made the dreams possible that might have been impossible. Now therefore be it known that I, Mayor Doug Sprouse of the city of Springdale, hereby recognize and acknowledge the 100 years of service of the Springdale Rotary Club and the citizens of Springdale are truly grateful for the selfless contributions of the Springdale Rotary Club for its 100 years of service above self to our community, and we thank you for the positive impact this club has made upon Springdale, Arkansas. Thank you. Does Ruth? You want something? No?
You want to say something? Dean, go.
Give it to you.
You gave me the, here.
Dean's our, Dean's our current president. Come on, Dean.
All right, no, we, we super appreciate this. Mayor Sprouse, as he mentioned, is a member of the club. We've been providing leadership and giving back to this community for a long time, and will continue to do it for a long time. Friday, this Friday is our 100th celebration. We'll do it a little more formally in another month or so, but super happy to be here and appreciate this recognition, and thanks to all of you.
Y'all come on right up here and let Anna get a picture.
Oh, that looks great. That's perfect. All right, y'all ready? One, two, three, cheese. Got it. All right, that looks great.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you go over with the council to make sure that, before we get into procedural motions with, with only six present, we'll have to do things maybe a little differently than normal. Ernest?
Right. Item, well, I guess we need to see if we have a motion first. Item seven is procedural motions. Do we have a motion?
Move for A and V.
Motion is second for A and V. So Ernest, second.
Thank you. Okay, so just let IT know, the mayor can vote to be the sixth vote to approve the procedural motions, because it does take a two-thirds vote. So we'll call for the vote.
Yeah, and we'll need a voice vote from you, Mark.
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes as well. So that's our six.
Carries six zero. And before we, while, while we're on the subject, next item is the planning report, and there's several ordinances that have emergency clauses. We will not be able to pass any emergency clauses tonight, because while the mayor can be the sixth vote to waive the three reading and read by title only, he cannot vote on an emergency clause. So if there's an ordinances on the agenda tonight, we won't be able to pass an emergency clause. So the choices would be, we could bring the emergency clause back to the next council meeting on April the 8th. If not, then the ordinances would go into effect 30 days after tonight. So I'll leave that to each individual applicant, how they want to proceed on that.
Go ahead, Sharon.
So Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's a little unusual to have three council people absent. Would it be out of order to give everyone that's on the agenda the option of coming back next week if, if they prefer? Would, I mean, it seems kind of unfair to me to make someone--
You mean in two weeks?
Well, at the, yeah, I meant the next council meeting.
I think, I, I think, yeah, absolutely. And Sharon, if you could help guide us in that, if, if, or if someone that gets their, gets their ordinance passed tonight, needs, needs to do it sooner than a month, more than sooner than 30 days, then we can sure do it in two weeks at our next council meeting.
I think, I think we have to do it now. I mean, I think if anyone in the audience would prefer not to come before us tonight, we could, they could let us know right now. We could table it and put it on the next agenda, next--
But in fact, if we go ahead and pass it, though, then in--
I'm saying if they want to keep it on and--
If we go ahead and, and pass it, then in two weeks, we could go ahead and--
We could do the emergency clause in.
Do the emergency clause in.
Yeah, but there may be some that might be controversial, or at least people think they might be controversial, and they don't want to take the chance of, of it being a majority vote.
Makes sure, makes sense.
Well, I think, I guess what I'm saying is, is there anyone that would prefer to bring their item forward at the next council meeting?
Ernest, are all these on the agenda now, or is there anything that needs to be tabled tonight, or?
We do have two items, item number nine and item number 10. We do have a request from the applicant to table those two items, and he would, one's a resolution, one's an appeal of denial of variance, and the applicant would have to notify adjacent property owners before it could be heard. And he, he doesn't have a preference whether it's tabled to April 8th or April 22nd, either
But it just won't be heard tonight?
Correct.
Jeff, what if, as Sharon brings these forward, if we just take them one by one and, and ask if, they may hear how a discussion goes and decide they want to wait, or they could move forward tonight. Does that sound okay? Everybody? Okay.
Is that all right? Okay.
So should we go ahead and table item nine and 10, though?
Do we need to vote to do that?
Well, I believe IT's got a slide for those, so we can do those when we get to them. I don't want to get them out of, out of their order. They're shaking, they're giving me thumbs up back there about that, so, okay.
Okay. All right. So Sharon, I think we're ready to move on with 8A.
All right, we'll get started. And I think we have the property owner for this first one. Mr. Dunk, if you're okay if they didn't, they, well, I'll, I'll wait and see how the vote is first. So our first one is a rezoning request for a 3.14 acre tract on Wagon Wheel, requesting a commercial zoning. And the title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R25-11 certain lands located at 3446 Wagon Wheel Road from agricultural district to general commercial district within Springdale, Arkansas."
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any discussion? Anyone in the room? Did everyone see the, the email that Sharon sent out, and then she put out a hard copy today? Okay. Is that kind of what y'all wanted?
That is awesome.
Is that helpful? Okay, we'll keep that up.
Yes, very, very nice.
Good, thank you. All right, we'll call for the vote on item eight.
Yes.
Carries five zero. So does the applicant.
So without the emergency clause, it will go into effect in 30 days, which just means that we cannot proceed with a business license for a tenant for 30 days. Are you okay with that, or?
We can bring it back April the 8th with the--
Come back in the next council meeting and do it.
I'm putting you on the spot, Mr. Dunk.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. Let me ask this, can--
Can you come up here real quick, so they can hear you?
Can you come, come up to my, please?
The tenant's rent starts June 1st, but she's going to be moving a few things in. That's okay, right? Without a business license or--
There's no operating.
No, she's not operating.
I don't think--
So she can move some stuff in. Okay.
Y'all see any problem with that?
It'll go into effect in 30 days.
Wrong.
You want to bring it back in, in two weeks for the emergency clause?
No.
Okay, 30 days is good?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, it'll just go into effect in 30--
Mr. Kate, I sure appreciate you. It's several years ago, but I get to say, because y'all passed this one time before, and you helped me, you helped get it through the problem that we had, so. I never, I never thanked you personally, but I just wanted to--
Well, you're welcome.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Light hawk catches a mouse every now and then.
All right. Our second item is a rezoning for a 1.65 acre tract on East Wagon Wheel, just west of the quarry. And the title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R25-12 certain lands located at 8692 East Wagon Wheel Road from agricultural district to low-medium density single-family residential district within Springdale, Arkansas."
Move the ordinance pass. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is this property owner here?
We don't. Mm-mm.
Okay.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay.
I'm here.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any, we've got a motion and a second. Any comments or questions with the council? Or anyone in the room? All right, we'll call for the vote. Go ahead, Mark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Carries five zero.
And Mrs. Thompson, do you under, do you understand that? It'll take effect in 30 days?
Seventy-five.
Is that okay? Okay. All right. And our next one, which I think we have the representative here, do you want to wait till April or proceed? This is R2514.
Just a quick question for you, Ernest. Do we need a majority of those present or a majority of the entire council?
You need five positive votes.
Well, then I guess my, my question would be, if, if anyone has any--
You gonna vote?
If anyone has any comments, questions, or concerns, then--
Only if we have to listen to long-winded lawyers do we make, change our vote.
I'll keep, keep it short, just one question. If, if anyone has any comments or questions, then I would suggest we table it. If, if everyone is satisfied with what you have now, then, then I'm fine and--
That's kind of an unfair question to us, because we try to keep an open mind until the matter's presented.
Well--
Let, let's read the title and then--
Okay.
The title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto-- zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-2514 certain lands located at 5720 East Wharton Road from agricultural district to general commercial district within Springdale, Arkansas."
Move the ordinance pass.
Second. We've got a motion and a second.
Just, just a reminder, this is a 52 acre tract, I believe, that we recently annexed in.
Fifty-five point seven.
Thank you. That we just recently annexed in from the county into the city of Springdale. It's at the southeast corner of Apple Blossom Road and Highway 265. And I believe at the planning commission, it was nine, nine zero in favor.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
So on here, it says, "Two neighbors were present." Comments, do you, can you recall those comments?
They were just inquiring about, about what, what the plans were and what the development was going to be. There wasn't necessarily support or opposition, more just questions, and we connected them with the representatives.
So Mayor, why did we lose our picture on our screen in front of us?
I don't know unless they were anticipating a vote. Guys, can y'all put that back up?
I'll tell you why, because I, I don't have anything on my...
His iPads.
Yeah, it's blank.
On the blank.
And maybe I didn't get the one that was sent out the second time?
I have a hard copy of the map.
This was one of the parcels, this was one the Van Zant family brought in. Yeah. Okay. Okay, any other questions? And I think I asked if anybody in the audience has any. All right, I'm going to call for the vote.
Yes.
Thanks, Mark.
Carries five, zero. Did you want to bring an emergency clause back in two weeks, or do you want to just let...
Nope, we're fine with 30 days.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Will.
All right, the next is another rezoning for a 4.88 acre tract on Graham Road. They're seeking an institutional zoning for an existing church. The title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-2516 certain lands located at 1600 West Graham Road from agricultural district to institutional district within Springdale, Arkansas."
And is this, this just to bring it in compliance? Is that, is that what this is?
Correct. They have, they have an expansion that'll be heard at the next planning commission, and we just wanted their zoning to be in alignment with that.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, call for the vote. Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carries five, zero. And are they good on waiting 30 days for it to go into effect as well? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next one is a replat, and this was combining two existing parcels and an existing commercial subdivision. And the title reads, "Accepting the Replat, RP-25-02 of Lots 7 and 8 Butterfield Coach Retail Park to the City of Springdale, Arkansas."
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? All right, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Carries five, zero. Is there anyone here on this one? Are you okay for going to effect in 30 days? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on, come on up to the mic, please.
Good evening, council members. Jorge Baragan, I was just, just curious on that. I didn't quite understand how that third day goes into effect. Does that mean that the plat's not going to be valid until 30 days? Or is that going to prevent anything from us being able to get a building permit?
That'd be a question for our chief building inspectors back there.
This is a project in which you might want to get that resolved prior to, because that could hold up the building permit for this specific project. So you may want to come back with that emergency clause.
So the best we could do is bring it back in two weeks, just to, it's approved, but we need to, we need to be able to pass an emergency clause to make it go into effect quicker than, quicker than 30 days.
Do you have, are you going to pull the building permit in 30 days? It's just your deciding factor.
I'm not, I'm not the main project manager, but... Okay. So I could still have a little bit of time, 24 hours maybe, to think it over?
Yeah, she just, we just need to know in time to get it on the agenda in two weeks.
Okay.
The agenda, I mean, what's the downside of waiting 30 days? Let's put it on the next one.
We can go ahead and put it on there, if you want to come back in two weeks.
Yeah, why don't we do that, just in case? Because like I said, I'm not sure the project manager working on it, when they're going to try to pull the permit. I think everything's pretty good. We're just trying to get our plat approved, so, yeah, why don't we do that? I think it would be better for us. Okay?
We can do that.
All right, thanks much.
All right. Go ahead. That's all our ordinances, Sharon.
All right, last two, sidewalk resolutions. All right, this next one is a, it's a sidewalk waiver for a single-family home on Kelly Road. The title reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver, W-25-06 of Street Improvements, Drainage Curbs, Gutters, Sidewalks, and Streetlights," as set forth in Ordinance Number 3725. I apologize if this property owner is here, I'm going to butcher it, Trujo, in connection with 4255 Kelly Road, a single-family dwelling.
Move for option one.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval with option one. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? Okay, call for the vote.
Yes.
Carries five, zero. Option one.
All right, and the last item is another sidewalk waiver for a single-family home. This one is on Subtle Drive, and the title reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver, W-25-09 of Street Improvements, Drainage Curbs, Gutters, Sidewalks, and Streetlights," as set forth in Ordinance Number 3725 to Veronica Garcia in connection with 116 Subtle Drive, a single-family dwelling.
Are there any sidewalks in this subdivision?
Sorry?
Are there any sidewalks in this subdivision?
No.
Move the resolution pass with option one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with option one. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, call for the vote.
Yes.
Carries five, zero, option one. The next two items are the items that the applicant is requesting to be tabled. I would request that it be tabled to the April 22nd city council meeting, because I think that should give him more than enough time to do what he needs to do to get...
The 22nd?
Before the council. Item nine and number 10.
Entertain a motion to that effect?
Some of them.
We have a motion to table until April 22nd. We have a second. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Carries five, zero. That was on number nine.
Okay.
Number 10 is the motion to table the appeal to the April 22nd city council meeting.
We have a motion and a second to table item 10 until April 22nd? Call for the vote.
Yes.
Carries five, zero. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sharon. Item 11, Community Development Block Grant Committee and Chair Aaron Huntley. Aaron? Well, y'all considered one resolution, and it was forwarded with a recommendation for approval. I'll go ahead and read it. A resolution adopting and approving the 2025 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And Dean is, is Dean here? In case we, in case y'all have any more questions? I know we had a, we had a good discussion before this was forwarded, so.
And nothing's changed, Dean, since then?
Negative.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Let's call for the vote.
Yes.
Carries five, zero.
All right, thank you. Item 12, Finance Committee and Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
So we had two items forwarded tonight from the Finance Committee. Both of them having to do with the execution of construction contracts or related to construction contracts. Both of these also have something to do with Don Tyson Parkway. Both of them were forwarded to council from the committee with recommendation for approval. Item 12A, the title to that resolution is, "A Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Construction Contract for Don Tyson Parkway and I-49 Southbound Signal Project Number 23BPS9."
And Ben wasn't able to make it tonight, but I can answer any questions you have.
I was out there the other day and saw traffic back to, past the bridge. I'll move the resolution pass.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve? Any other questions or comments? Okay, call for the vote.
Yes.
Carries five, zero.
Item 12B was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. The title of that resolution is, "A Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Services Agreement for Construction Phase Services of, on Don Tyson Parkway and I-49 Southbound Signal, Project Number 23BPS9."
So Mayor, I do have a question or just a, I want to add for the record, a comment. The question was brought up during the last meeting, or committee meeting, questioning why we have to have another professional group to manage this project when we've got our own engineering company and their company that's doing it? Why we need to spend another $75,000 to have another middleman in there? I just don't understand that.
Well, I can, I can answer part of that, is that if we had another middleman, if we, if we don't, we're going to be paying the design prof, well, this is the design, this is, this is the same design firm, but it's not, but construction oversight during construction is not a part of their original scope of the project. That was a design contract. So whoever, whether we go with them or somebody else, we're going to be paying for management during construction.
His question, his question is why it couldn't be done in-house by the engineering department.
I didn't hear his question that way, but, but we've, we don't, I don't, I don't know that we're comfortable with the expertise on the, on an actual signal project, signalization project.
That's correct.
But the company that's installing them, have they not done these before?
Yes, all service electric has done signals in other parts of town before.
But we always have a oversight.
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah, it's like we have, we have, even for, for a road project, we, we hire, outside of the design contract, we hire for, for oversight during construction. Okay?
I think I raised the question, and it, to me, it was just because it was just signalization that kind of caught my eye, and, and that was my question, is, you know, we have someone design it, it's supposed to be designed according to certain standards. We have an engineering department, it's supposed to make sure it's designed according to certain standards. And then we have a, we've selected a contractor that's supposed to be competent in installation, apparently has done it before. I know we always do it, but is it always appropriate, I guess was my question.
And in this instance, we found that it is, there's also materials testing services that go along with this and, and testing for the concrete, which is not something that the engineering department has capability of doing.
This all has to be done per, I mean, this is in the highway right-of-way, R dot right-of-way, correct?
It's in city right-of-way, it's on an interchange with the, with the interstate, but it's technically city property.
Okay, so they don't have to, we're not having to go by any of their standards?
No.
Okay. Well, what's your pleasure, council? I'm not willing to gamble on them.
I'm going to, I'm going to move this resolution pass.
I didn't.
Make a motion? Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
We ready to start on this?
Yes.
We don't have a motion to table yet, but we don't have a second either.
You have, you have, you have an infrastructure project, and I know it may just be signaled, but it's a major infrastructure project that's going to be routing a lot of cars through, and it's, it's best to have it to be supervised or observed or inspected, however you want to say it, by somebody who is actually competent in that, in that field. There's a lot of moving components in signalization, not just materials testing, there's a lot of different components. And, and to me, it's just best to have competent individuals out there who can see a contractor. Yes, they do it, but they may not be, there may be something going on wrong. There may be some equipment issues, there may be stuff with the cabinet, with the, with the wiring that needs to be caught, so it, it, it's a pretty big deal, and I'm going to stick to my motion to this pass.
And on top of being one of the busiest intersections in town, we want to ensure it's done correctly.
Yeah, this is something that you want, when you build stuff like this, you want to build for years down the road, and you don't want to have to have repeat issues coming up with it. That's, that's not cost efficient.
I, I'm hesitant to second because I'm worried like you are, Mayor, on what's going to happen if we don't have the votes, but I'm, I'm in favor. I'm going to support you. Support, I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, I asked the question, I got an answer, I'm satisfied with that, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Any, any other questions or comments? All right, call for the vote.
Yes.
Carries five, zero.
I was all ready to vote. Thanks. Thank you, Mark. All right, item 13, Police and Fire Committee and Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Give me just a minute. We had one resolution come before us at the last committee meeting, and it was for the recommendation for approval. Chief's here, if we have any, any questions. This is an agreement between C. Springdale and Tonnay Town for, for an automatic mutual agreement. So I'll read the title of the resolution, which is, "A Resolution Approving an Automatic Mutual Aid Agreement Between the City of Tonnay Town Fire Department and the City of Springdale Fire Department."
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Other comments or questions? All right, call for the vote.
Yes.
Carrie's five zero.
All right, thank you. Item 14, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you. This ordinance is an ordinance amending ordinance number 6037, approving the private club permit for Raise the Bar Foundation and allowing for the application of the required permits from the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division for Arkansas Code Annotated 3-9-222, as amended and for other purposes. You actually passed ordinance number 6037 on December 10th of 2024. The organization made me aware that they had listed the wrong individual as the manager, so this would amend that to, to list the correct manager, which is required for them to get their ABC license. And if this passes, I'll, we'll be bringing this back in two weeks with an emergency clause, because I know they want to get this fixed.
Was this a mess, another mess up by an attorney?
Yes, but not the city attorney. The attorney for Raise the Bar.
Ernest, in the future, they change managers, do they just go through the, the board to do that?
I'm not sure. I know this is a, this is actually a new permit, so I think that's why they have to have the correct person in there initially, but I'm not sure about going forward.
Move's ordinance passed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I'll ask Captain Taylor. Jeff, do you know if, like on the ABC, I don't know how closely you've worked with them, but if, when there's a managerial, managerial change, do they have to?
They apply the ABC application, and we just look at it to see if there's anything that we've had issues with, and we sign off on it.
Okay.
A lot of, like, there's a, you know, a lot of gas station sales, they'll have to change, anytime they do a change, permanent owner, they have to do an application with this.
Okay. Mark, I don't know if you could hear that, but you do, Captain Taylor, he said that you do have to, with a manager, with a changing manager, they have to, they have to go notify ABC and go through a process.
So the police knows also who to get ahold of if they've got problems?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We did get a motion, a second. Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Anybody need to speak to this? Anybody in the room or council? All right, call for the vote.
Yes.
Carrie's five zero.
All right, thank you. We're at item 15, a discussion on the first city council committee meeting in April.
March 31st.
Is that a motion? We have a motion, we have a second to move that to March 31st. Otherwise, we're going to have a committee meeting the night before the first council meeting. Jeff, reluctantly. He was trying to get somebody else to do it, but, hey, we've got a, we've got a motion, a second to move committee to next Monday, which would be March 31st, correct? All right. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Carrie's five zero.
All right, thank you. Any comments from council members? Our city attorney?
Go Hogs.
Go Hogs. Our mayor, no?
So move.
We have a motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Enjoy spring break.
Mayor, real quick, if we go back to the pleasant, just, I know you're aware of it, I want to make the council aware.
Go ahead, Ron.
We've been out there several times at both of those locations. The people's been very generous to let us in on, to look at the property of both the outbuildings there. So, and when we found something, they've been cited, so just wanted the council to be aware of that.
Thank you, Ron. And Ernest, you have aerial photos from back showing, showing that that, there was a gravel driveway there in the past, and we, our, our, our practice has always been, whether it's a parking lot or a driveway, if it, to, to, to be deemed a pre-existing condition, that we would allow more gravel put on where gravel's already been. And we have aerial photos showing in years past that was gravel driveway.
And they also went through engineering and got a permit to get a driveway expansion to go back from the road to the, to front-facing of the house as well. So they've, they've done everything that they've been asked to do.
All right, thanks, Ron. If y'all ever want to hear more about that, well, we can certainly put it on a committee meeting. I'll just defer to you all.